Violated a section of the district's policy on recruiting activities. The policy states, and I quote, recruiters may not roam the campus or school grounds. Recruiters may not pursue, approach students. Students must first approach recruiters. Another section of the policy was violated during the Marines' visit. Next to their table, recruiters had a chin-up bar for students to use, but in order for the students to participate, they had to fill out a form that asked for their name, email address, home address, phone number, a signature, and other private information. Depending on how well students did on the chin-up bar, the students would be given a prize. I was given this same form by the recruiter who approached me. A copy of it is being given today. The form is in the packet I just handed to you guys. And this is a policy violation because the policy clearly states recruiters visiting schools shall not at any time solicit contact information directly from students or require it as a condition to participate in any activity or receive an award or gift. Violations like this have occurred at my school before, which you were told about in 2012. To conclude, this means one simple thing. The policy on recruiting passed by the school board in 2010 is not being enforced. This compromises the education and safety of students. Sincerely, Senator Martinez. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Megan Owen. I'm a biologist at the San Diego Zoo for the past 16 years, and more importantly, I'm a mother of three children in San Diego here. My oldest son is a freshman at San Diego High, and in early May, he came home from school and explained to me this story, very similar to what Julio just described, where there were recruiters on campus and challenged anybody in the area to participate in their chin-up contest. My son is an athletic, energetic, competitive young man, just like many of his classmates. And we talked about it, you know, how many chin-ups did you do? I'm interested in that. And then he went on to tell me that they had to fill out a form in order to participate in this and have the chance to win prizes, along with all of his friends. He had to fill out a form that had his name, his contact information, information about his interests, asking him if he thought, if he was interested in action, adventure, and all sorts of other information. Also, in the packet that Julio just mentioned, there are pictures that I've also shown to my son, and this is exactly the configuration at San Diego High on that day. I was very, very disappointed to hear this. I was not disappointed that there were recruiters on campus. I wasn't disappointed that they were engaging them in a physical activity, but I was very disappointed to find out that they were asking my 15-year-old son for his personal contact information. This is not something we discussed, completely inappropriate, and as I suspected, it was completely against an established policy. Very disappointing. And, you know, if security to get in and out of the school is so tight, I don't understand how this kind of thing can be happening on campus in full view. I also, just to convey that this is about adults recruiting my children for things without my knowledge. I have the same discussion with my son. He's at an age where college recruiters are interested in him because he's a soccer player. I had the exact same conversation with him about sharing information with recruiting adults. This has to be something that I am involved in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ernie McCray, retired principal representing the Education, Not Arms Coalition today. Almost three years ago, at the request of students, parents, and other community members, the board adopted what we felt was a model policy to regulate all recruiting activities in district schools. Unfortunately, 15 months later, we learned that serious violations of the policy were occurring and asked the district to take action to correct the problem. The only apparent action that occurred, however, was the writing of an administrative procedure that contradicted the board's policy in several ways. Some of these mistakes are still in the procedure. The statements given by students and a parent today that you just heard demonstrate that almost three years after the policy was adopted, it still is not being followed. We therefore are asking the district to take specific steps to resolve the problem. They are listed in detail on the sheet we have given you, which I will summarize. Correct the mistakes in Administrative Procedure 4945 that we have previously brought to your attention. Issue a special bulletin before the new school year starts directing principals to fully enforce the policy and giving them examples of violations that have been brought to the district's attention. The bulletin should remind principals that they must require recruiters to sign in when they visit and that they should then be given the list of recruiter guidelines. The district should supply schools with the list of guidelines to hand to recruiters when they sign in. And we feel the bulletin should also remind principals that the policy requires them to report recruiting violations to the district and notify the violators that their access could be suspended for 12 months if there are more violations. We're just trying to make it easy for you by suggesting these actions, but it's been almost three years, so we're hanging in there because we're hanging in there kind of folks, and we're hoping that it'll be taken care of as soon as you can. Thank you.
Thank you. And we would ask Superintendent Martin and staff to please check into this matter. Obviously, when we have policies, we want the policies to be followed. Okay. At this point, we're going to call to order the July 9, 2013, regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. I'm noticing that the first thing on the agenda is a roll call, so I guess I could see how many, go down the list and see how many board members are present. Mr. Barrera, Ms. Foster, and Mr. Beiser are present, as well as myself. Mr. Barnett is absent this evening. And so you can also see that the dais looks a little bit different. We change things around from time to time. It's unfortunate that tonight our very loyal student representative, Daniel Hamilton, is not here because he was going to be moved to the front row, but hopefully he'll be here for our other meeting in July. And a little bit later, Superintendent Martin will be talking about the other two seats. We have a lot of people in the staff and the audience that can fill those two seats, and so we're going to be kind of rotating through them and explaining about that. But at this point, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And I would like to also point out and welcome all of you here. Welcome all of those who are watching the broadcast. Especially hello to Mr. Bill Koba, who is watching his first meeting that he did not have to attend, I'm sure. We'll see.
Or not.
Maybe not. Okay. And if you want to speak today, you can get a slip from his ward to my right, and you can speak on a particular agenda item. If you want to speak on something that's not on the agenda, we will have non-agenda testimony also at the end of the meeting. Okay. So to begin our meeting tonight, I guess before the administrative assignments, I'd like to start off with the superintendent's information report. First of all, I would like to welcome to the dais Cindy Martin, the new superintendent of Public Education for Santa Unified School District.
Well, you don't have to make me cry.
This is just the beginning.
I'm just the first thing I'm going to do, cry tears of joy.
It's just because you care.
Very much so. Thank you. I'm honored for you to all welcome me the way you just did with your applause, and I feel a tremendous sense of responsibility, and I'm honored to serve. So while I'm talking, you'll see behind me pictures that tell the story of the last 131 days since that happened. And when that press conference happened 131 days ago, I began an engagement process. And I guess I didn't really start that engagement process 131 days ago. I started it a long, long time ago. I've been an educator for 27 years, but the responsibility in front of me now is to work together with this entire community around public education. And I started at McKinley Variety Show, was one of the first community events that I went to, because my leadership philosophy and the way I've always engaged as a teacher, as an educator, is around this philosophy, there's no place like home. And you see the ruby slippers there. I had to trade my ruby slippers into running shoes, and at the McKinley Variety Show, one of the first community events I went to, I found a little girl wearing ruby boots, and I thought, I think I'm going to need those, because I knew I needed to get out into the community and talk to people, and not just call it a listening tour, but understanding and engaging the wide community in a dialogue around public education. And so that's what I've been doing for the last 131 days. And I decided to show the pictures of some of the places that I went, people that I talked to. It was over 150 events, and they weren't just events. They were small conversations, large conversations. You're seeing a picture now of Washington, D.C., when Dr. Evans and I traveled there and talked to Arnie Duncan about what we believe. Did we get our message across, you think?
Yes.
We had our chance to say what we think and what we believe in San Diego. And when you think about what it takes to engage an entire city, an entire nation, around the hope and promise of public education, I believe in beginning with what's working. And I believe in paying attention to what's working and noticing what's working. And we all know that there are things that we need to improve, and there's things that we need to fix, and we need to engage where the solutions might be, but we begin with what's working. And some of the key words that I learned and that we've engaged in the community with is looking at how we do our work in ways that are sustainable, in ways that are scalable, replicable. We want to be systemic, and we want to be systematic, and we want to make sure what we do is equitable. And, Mr. Koba, if you're watching, I don't forget the word affordable. He said, you always have to remember affordable, too, but we begin with what's working, and our children across this city deserve for us to make decisions that are systemic and systematic. And so if I begin with what's working, I had to spend the time in the last 131 days going to places where things are working and paying attention. And I've watched board members give your board reports and your list of places that you visited, and you have one week to, maybe you're deciding or describing where you've been the last couple of weeks. If I were to read the list of all the places that I've been in the last four months getting ready, it would take the whole board meeting, and John already told me I have a certain time limit. And so the photos are just some of the pictures of where I've been, and if I haven't talked to you yet or I didn't engage your community, I'm here to do that. And that's the way we support our children in public education is through engagement, through active engagement and active participation of all of our stakeholders. And so the process, we call it appreciative inquiry, and it's appreciating what's working. We believe that what you pay attention to is what grows. And we believe in also a model called positive deviance, which is a fancy term, you can look it up, but all of our leadership team has read that. The board has read about positive deviance, and it's looking at deviant behavior, which is not a negative term, meaning different than the norm, that achieves positive results. And all across this city, all across this district, I've noticed many, many, many solutions where people have created excellence during a time of tremendous budget crisis, during a time of very difficult decisions, people have found solutions. And so now what do we do as a city to engage those solutions and be systemic and systematic about it? And that's, the board has given us clear direction that the vision is a quality school in every neighborhood, every school, a quality school. And with Vision 2020 and the indicators of what makes a school great, we together come around making those solutions happen all around the city. And I'm honored that our Board of Education has been very clear and very courageous in the appointment of me as a superintendent, but courageous in their voice around what they see as important for public education. This board has said a great school isn't just about great test scores. This board has said children are more than a test score. And if they're more than a test score, what are they? And if a school is great not just because of a high API score, what else makes a school great? And we've looked at what makes a school great. We've looked at the indicators, and the organizational structure that I brought forward at the last board meeting talks about the heart of this district being teaching and learning in the classroom, and the heart is around that. And so all of the places, all of the pictures that you see behind me are helping me look at the heart again and putting our focus on the heart. There's my picture of there's no place like home. I think the answers that we need are right here. Our solutions are local. Our solutions are created by a group of people who care. They say, one of the groups that I spoke to during my time in the last four months was Rotary Club, and their slogan is, great cities are made, don't just happen, they're made by generations of people who care. And that's what I say about great school districts. Great school districts don't just happen. They happen through generations of people who care and people who participate and who contribute and create solutions where we didn't know they were already there. And it's, I'm astounded. I already knew great things were happening because of my time at Central, but being in all the different places over the last four months showed me where excellence is and how to continue to grow from there. So some of the things that I did, I did get to all 16 clusters. I went to political events to talk about what we believe in. I went to Girl Scout events, Boy Scout events, community events. The Claremont Cluster had a fundraiser, went to that. Claremont Cluster Schools also had a Saturday event. The list goes on and on, but every single place that I went to, I found a group of people who absolutely care about our schools being great, and that's all around this city. So as I begin and engage the next stage of my leadership, I welcome you and I invite you to do it with us. We'll do this together. And I often talk about people want to say how to fix public education, and they have ideas about what they want to do to us and what they want to do for us, and people living outside the system, not teaching every day in the classroom or working every day in our schools or driving our buses or feeding our children in the cafeterias. They have ideas about how to fix us because they think we're broken. And we say, we're taking down the broken flag, and we're talking about what's working, and we're going to do that together, and I invite everybody to do it with us. And know that over the last four months, I feel like I've amassed an army that's standing behind us. And people say, we support you, Cindy, we support this work. I say, if you support me, you support children, because all six of us up here, Mr. Barnett's not here, but I know he's included, we're here for one thing, and it's the education of our children. So thank you for the opportunity to begin the work or continue the work. That picture right there was at Horace Mann, oh, it went off the screen too quickly. One of my visits was Horace Mann Middle School, and that's where I attended, and there was a sign, a painting, a mural on the wall at Horace Mann that said, "A journey of a thousand steps begins with just one." And I took a pic, Marnie was with me when we went, so that was when we were at the Crawford Cluster, and she took her picture of me in front of that sign, and wow, it was so meaningful to be back to the school where I started and to stand in the hallway where I attended as a seventh and eighth grader and stand in front of that sign about to become the superintendent. When we say dream big, we're talking dream big, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
We'll let the pictures continue to go because there's more.
Absolutely. And as your first official action, if you would give us the administrative assignments.
I think this is like a momentous time, administrative assignments, because I know the role of the principal is so important. And tonight I'll be talking about four principal assignments, and actually five, and the role of the principal, just leaving the principalship myself, I know how important this role is. So I'm going to announce tonight, Principal David Crum, Principal at Washington Elementary School, Jennifer Roberson, Principal at Claremont High School, Anna Diaz Booze, sorry, Anna Diaz Booze, Principal Kearney High School of International Business and Kearney High School of Science, Connections, and Technology, Cheryl Hiblin, Principal Kearney High School of Digital Media Design, and Kearney High School Stanley Foster Construction Tech Academy. The last two that I mentioned, Anna Diaz Booze and Cheryl Hiblin, is a realignment that we are doing at the four small high schools at Kearney, that we plan to continue the model. We plan to continue the four high schools, and Cheryl and Anna will be principals each of two schools, and we will be having two vice principals work with them. So at Kearney High School, at SIB and SCT, we will have Anna Diaz Booze and a vice principal, which there will be a vacancy for, that we will fill, and then Cheryl Hiblin will work with a vice principal at DMD and CTA. And our intention is to keep the model strong and to grow in ways that are sustainable, replicable, scalable, and equitable. That was a realignment that we decided to make at Kearney.
Very good. Thank you. And it's been a key issue of the board to really have high-quality principal leadership in our schools, and it's really being put into place with the leadership team that Superintendent Martin has assembled and particularly having an office of leadership development. So we're looking forward to a lot of that. At this point, let's go to board reports. Let's start with Mr. Barrera.
Thank you, President Evans, and welcome Superintendent Martin. Just two visits I wanted to highlight. One, I had the honor of attending the Garfield Elementary School reclassification ceremony, which is the worst, we've got to come up with a better word. It's the worst, it's the worst word in our school district. What it means is students who had been previously classified as English learners demonstrated proficiency in English and therefore are reclassified and are no longer deemed English learners. But the heart of the, what the students have worked so hard for was apparent at the ceremony. Every student, these are fourth and fifth graders who came through the process, made a speech in English, talking about what this process has meant to them and to their family. And I can tell you, and you know, we've been to all the great graduation ceremonies over the past month. I've never seen prouder parents than the parents seeing their students standing up and delivering their speeches in English, and they were profound, all of them, so it was an honor to be there. And then I also had the privilege of attending the Price High School graduation ceremony, where 100% of the graduating class have all been admitted into four-year universities. So it was great to see the students at Price move forward.
About the bilingual achievement award instead of reclassification.
Yeah, exactly. That's a better, better name. There we go.
Okay. All right. Ms. Foster.
I'd like to say that the first bilingual achievement award that I attended was at Cindy's School Central, and so that was quite an experience, something to behold and celebrate. So I like that new description. Also, Kevin, trustee Beiser and I attended Gompers Preparatory Academy promotion, and that is quite an experience, and they've also enjoyed the same success. 100% of the graduating class are going on to four-year colleges. So we are doing some great work that we need to lift up and celebrate and share across this district. And then finally, I'm just going to be brief today. Welcome, Cindy. Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Beiser.
Thank you. A couple of things. First of all, I attended the Gompers High School graduation. What a great event that was. That is not your typical high school graduation. It's quite a ceremony, and there's a lot of pomp and circumstance in that it is run by the students, and you get to, they get the opportunity to demonstrate the skills that they have learned over the last many years. Also visited Price and observed classroom instruction and had the opportunity to visit with some of the students about what it is that they appreciate and what are some of the challenges of attending a school at UCSD, because they're from all over the city. And so they're really looking forward to mass transit and the trolley line. I attended a conference in Washington, D.C. with the National Middle Schools where we had a National Action Day where we advocated for public education. I'd like to appreciate several members of the House of Representatives for finding time in their busy calendar to meet with me and some other teachers that I've worked with for many years and my principal, the Honorable Jared Polis, Juan Vargas, Susan Davis, and Scott Peters, all were very effective advocates for public education, and I'm grateful that they're going to continue to fight for us in Washington, D.C. I was also in Washington, D.C. because I'm a teacher at Granger Junior High School, and we were in Washington, D.C. to receive a national award. We were named a National Turnaround School to Watch, which is a model example of how you can take a school with high poverty that is supposed to be not successful and turn that around and realize success for those children. So that was a great honor, and it doesn't come easy. It takes years and years of hard work and strong, effective leadership at the school to make sure that those kids' trajectory can be completely changed. And finally, I was engaged to get married of my partner of over eight years, Dan Mock, and I'm thrilled to be legally engaged. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin, and congratulations. We had a pretty big event last week, which was a workshop of the school board and our new superintendent, Cindy Martin, during her first week on the job. And the purpose of it, and it should have been attended by masses of the media to see what was going on, but we were up in a little corner in Scripps Ranch, and it was fairly quiet, but it was some really, really important work. And it was really about discussing as a board, what is our Vision 2020? What are we trying to accomplish in our schools? And how does Superintendent Martin intend to help us achieve that? And basically put, we've said that we want every child in every school in every neighborhood of San Diego to have a quality educational experience and be ready for success when they graduate from high school. And this is a pretty big and bold goal that we have. We're really saying all means all. We have pockets of success, and we want that to happen across the district. This afternoon, I went over to, or earlier today, went over to Bernie Elementary just to meet again with the fifth graders there who are in the class of 2020, and we were talking about what Vision 2020 is, which is basically, excuse me, that we want all of our students to have a broad and challenging curriculum with quality teaching. And in the first four years, these students, who are now in the fifth grade, have had the benefit of small class sizes, stable teaching staff, they've had the latest technology in the classroom, and student achievement is going up. Next year, they're going on to middle school, and then from there on to high school, and we want them to be continuing to learn, to be creative and critical thinkers. We want them to be digitally literate, and we're talking about language. We want all of our students to be able to communicate in at least two languages. We want them to have a rigorous high school curriculum and to have real-world experiences in our career technical programs. So we had an opportunity at the workshop to discuss what our vision is and Superintendent Martin's version and vision of how she sees we can implement this vision. So I thought it was very helpful. I think it's a really great day, and I think we're really ready to get off to a great start as we're planning for the next year of the summer and getting off to a really fantastic start in September 2013. So, one more comment.
Because the District E trustee-director's not here, and I don't know if she's going to show up later, I must mention that on the 17th of this month will be the next District E trustee-cabinet meeting held at Gompers Preparatory Academy at 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay. And as I mentioned earlier, it was a little bit different arrangement in the seating up here. A year or two ago, we moved the board members out a little bit so we could have a little bit more eye contact when we're conversing in the board meetings. And I was talking with Superintendent Martin about her desire to have staff participating collegiately with the board member rather than just standing down there and speaking up to the board, actually be able to come up here when they have a presentation and be able to talk with us. So if you could kind of explain some of your thinking about that.
Yeah, Dr. Evans and I talked about the role at a public board meeting, how we have a dialogue. And when I said in my opening comments about how we'll do our work, I'll say we'll do this together, we thought about, first of all, there's a lot of staff that helps make this work get done, and so staff is here with us, but there aren't enough seats for all the staff that help implement some of the ideas for our vision for quality neighborhood schools. So what we'd like to do is when there's a dialogue, we want it to be more like a conversation, and instead of having staff stand at the microphone and talk to us back and forth like that in exchange, when staff has a presentation, staff will come and sit. We don't have the names here because it will just say staff, and we'll invite up the appropriate staff members, whether it's someone from the finance team or someone from the academic team or the leadership team, whatever the... or someone from the academic team, or the leadership team, whatever the presentation will be, we'll invite them to come up during the time on the agenda that it's for them to present. And with teaching and learning and children at the center, at the heart of the organization, we feel it's important to have a student here up here with us in the dialogue, in the conversation. And unfortunately, he's not here tonight. So he will be here. We have two student representatives normally. One will be here July 30th at the next board meeting. But that's the intention, is that the students that we serve are part of the conversation, they're part of the dialogue, and then relevant staff for whatever topic will be up here while we're having our conversation. So it's meant to be a dialogue. So thank you.
Okay. Well, let's move on to the agenda. We have two items, H6 and H10, move to the top. Other than that, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Okay, please vote. Okay. And our first item then is a proclamation recognizing Max Gwynn, the founder of Kids Eco Club. Mr. Beiser, you want to speak about this?
Thank you, President Evans. What we really have, two proclamations this evening. The first one is to recognize Max Gwynn. Thank you for coming to the podium, sir. Max Gwynn founded the nonprofit Kids Eco Club in 2011 at the age of 10 years old to inspire, educate, and connect K-12 youth to lead a cultural transformation that optimizes health and sustains the environment. The vision of Kids Eco Club is of youth empowerment to transform the health of communities and the planet. Kids Eco Club has provided and continues to provide free services to several thousand San Diego Unified students, including sustainability education, labs, field trips, leadership training, technology training, nutrition, and wellness education, as well as education related to gardens and food agriculture. Max Gwynn designed and built the first barn owl nesting box equipped with a solar power-operated video camera for San Diego Unified schools, and thereafter formed a collaboration with the woodshop at Claremont High School to build owl boxes for San Diego Unified schools. Max Gwynn has established numerous school-based environmental clubs throughout San Diego Unified. He has tirelessly dedicated his time and passion to educating youth to be responsible stewards of the planet. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education recognizes Max Gwynn as a youth changemaker, and also recognizes his innovative efforts and impressive accomplishments in creating and providing programs to support healthy students, healthy communities, and a healthy planet. Thank you very much, Max. I'd like to move this proclamation and the proclamation recognizing Kids Eco Club.
Second. Okay, please vote. And that is approved. Max, go ahead.
Thank you so much for this award. It's truly been really an honor.
All right, great job.
Okay. Do you want to do one in the middle, the center? Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Max.
That's great. And we are recognizing youth accomplishments tonight, and we have another really important accomplishment. Okay, I'm sorry.
Right, we voted on both.
Okay. But Superintendent Martin wanted to make a comment on the Eco Club first, and then we'll move on to our next one.
The pictures we're playing while we were talking about the proclamations that we just gave to Kids Eco Club, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments. So I don't know if I didn't do it at the right time, sorry.
This is a collegial group.
I wanted to not only recognize Max, but recognize Kids Eco Club for what you're doing. When we talk about our quality school indicators and a broad and challenging curriculum being a frame for all of the work that we do, and we look to our community partners to do this work with us, you have set a gold standard as an organization, Kids Eco Club, around what it looks like to engage with schools and do things with us, not to us and not for us. And the pictures that we're playing when we first started talking about this board item were some examples of your outreach around this entire city, engaging and asking the schools what they need, what is going to help with their broad and challenging curriculum around your mission being accomplished as an organization. But you don't come to us with your mission, you come and ask how can you serve in implementing the broad and challenging curriculum. So the declaration, besides recognizing Max for what you've done, also recognizing the continued collaboration with Kids Eco Club as an example of how our community partners can engage with our schools around a broad and challenging curriculum. And some of the examples, I encourage people to look at their website and look at what they've created, finding solutions, creating a technology interface so our teachers are able to crowdsource and share lessons with each other. They developed this before we had my big campus. They developed it and worked with our technology department to do it. They've been at schools. They did a youth leadership event where they had students from different parts of the neighborhood, meeting at USD and doing leadership presentations that I got to see. And I've only experienced four or five of what their outreach has been. When I look at the list, I say this is an example of what it looks like. So recognizing and declaring this continued collaboration, I'm honored to be able to do that as the first partnership, collaboration that we recognize as I begin my work as a superintendent. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. And now we have another amazing story about another young man in this case, Mr. Burr.
All right.
I wasn't referring to Mr. Burr.
Yeah, no. Exactly. Nathan, would you mind coming up? Dory, if you want to come up with Nathan, that's fine. You okay standing up there? Okay. Well, Nathan, I'm just going to read the proclamation, and then I know that you have a few words to say. Great. Well, listen, every person in California that cares about public schools should be honoring Nathan tonight for the work that you've done over the last year. So I'm going to read the proclamation. This is in recognition of Nathan Stedman for his commitment and support of Proposition 30. Whereas Nathan Stedman is 10 years old and attends Maryland Avenue Elementary School in La Mesa, where he will enter fifth grade this fall. And whereas in October 2012, Nathan began precinct walking in support of Proposition 30 after hearing how it would help schools in California. And whereas the first voter Nathan ever spoke to was an elderly woman who was impressed by his passion, and she told him right away that she would definitely vote yes for Proposition 30. And whereas after getting that first yes, Nathan wanted to stay out campaigning all day in the hot sun. And whereas when Nathan's mother, Dory, told him they had to go home, he made his mother promise to take him the following Saturday, and he continued to precinct walk almost every Saturday. And whereas when most children Nathan's age were home playing, he was out walking and educating voters about Proposition 30, Nathan not only motivated his mother, but inspired everyone who precinct walked with him. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the San Diego Unified School District Board of Education that it recognizes Nathan Stedman for his commitment and support of Proposition 30 for all schools in California, adopted and approved, so moved.
Second.
Okay, please vote. And that is unanimously approved.
All right.
Nathan, if you stand up for public education, we stand up for you.
Nathan, would you like to say a couple of words?
Yes, please. Hello, my name is Nathan Stedman. I'm 10 years old. I'm going into the fifth grade at Maryland Avenue Elementary. The passing of Proposition 30 raised money for all the schools. Proposition 30 protected my future and the future for all the students in the state of California. My mom and dad told me that a good education and going to college are very important so that when I grow up, I can have something called a career. I think that means I'm supposed to get a good job, because I told my parents when I am an adult and I can drive, I want to buy a red Dodge Viper with big orange flames painted on the sides. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope we get your car.
Nathan, you want to come down so we can get a picture? Right here, front and center, young man.
Yeah, nice shirt.
Good time. Nathan, you want to hold your?
Yeah. Nice. One more. Congratulations.
And earlier Nathan told Superintendent Martin that he's starting his campaign for president tonight. So we'll all be out precinct walking for you.
Let's see, what year would that be? That's beyond 2020.
Beyond 2020.
Yes. I think Nathan's going to graduate in 2021. So I forgot to mention earlier about when we kind of changed the seating arrangements, the board members will also be rotating out into the audience from time to time. Not really. I was just noticing Dr. Meyer and Mr. Stover enjoying sitting there in the audience instead of having to be up here. So we'll kind of switch off between them and us on that item. Okay. Now we will move on to the superintendent's consent agenda. Does any board member wish to pull an item? Seeing none.
I'll move the consent.
Mr. Evans, you have speakers on the consent.
Excuse me on this. I'm so excited listening to Nathan and planning his campaign. Wasn't ready for that. Okay, we have some speakers on items. Let me see here, E3, E10, and E21. We have the same speaker named Citizen.
Regarding the Interdivisional Curriculum Committee, at this point in the school year, it is awfully late to be approving courses. This should have been done back in January when the students were selecting courses for this coming year. That needs to be looked at because it's definitely a problem that the ICC is not aligned with the schedule of the school district. And regarding the SERP, I don't think that is good for this school district to have more experienced teachers retiring. I think that at this point, we've had a lot of them retire, and we need to keep our experienced teachers that can mentor the many, many young teachers that are in this school district due to previous SERPs. And then regarding the classification item of upgrading the early education position, that is just ridiculous. And I don't know what Lamont Jackson is thinking in changing that job to a higher-paying job. That is just ridiculous. Where is the money coming from? He's the director of human resources, and he ought to be telling the board and the superintendent that there is no money for this. But it seems like every time I see an agenda, somebody else managed to get their job on there to be upgraded, so we're going to pay somebody more money to do the same job. And that's just ridiculous. Now I know that person retired, but the reason it was given is so that we can recruit more people, better people, more people, to help in recruitment efforts. That's just ridiculous. This job already pays $100,000 a year. I'm sure you can find a lot of people in San Diego that will apply for this job that pays more than $100,000 a year. So that just needs to be voted down, because there's just no money. And this secret way of constantly giving people raises and giving raises and giving raises is taking money away from children. When you give a raise to this adult, that's money that's being taken out of the schools. That means we have little kindergartners having to buy their own crayons.
Okay, now having had the public testimony, items wished to pull.
I want to pull E3.
E3.
And I want to pull E21. And I really have two simple questions about E19 and E20, but we'll pull those two for my questions.
Okay. Okay, now we've had the public speaker and items pulled. Does anyone have a motion to adopt the remaining items?
So moved.
Okay, and seconded. Okay, please vote. Okay, we will address those items at the end of the meeting. Yes, that was the item on the consent agenda. Okay. Now we will move on to Section G, the board consent agenda. Minutes, motion to approve, please.
Move.
Second.
And on item H2 is basically to approve. Okay, please revote. It's a pretty controversial vote for minutes. Okay. And that passes 4-0. Now we'll move on to item H2, which is board memberships and legislative advocacy. And the purpose of this is just on an annual basis to renew our memberships in the Council of Great City Schools, the California School Board Association, and the National School Boards Association, where we're able to do legislative advocacy for the school district. And this has been an important part of the work of the board. Again, this is routine at the beginning of the year to approve these items. And in the course of the year, we would talk among the board members about who wanted to participate in each item as we generally spread that around. Okay, moved and seconded. Please vote. And item H4 is to direct staff to explore options for a supplemental early retirement program. Mr. Beiser?
Yeah, thank you, President Evans. Trustee Foster and I are bringing this item forward because we feel that as we're looking into our next three-year budget cycle, we need to explore all of our financial options to make sure that we're doing the best we can to minimize the impact to the budget. This motion tonight does not approve a SERP at all. All that it does is direct staff to run the numbers and see if it is in the financial best interests of the school district and what different kind of options might be available for us as we look forward into next year and then the following two-year budget cycles.
Okay, so this is.
So I'll move H4.
Okay, so this motion is based to direct staff to explore, to do the preliminary work, and then report back to us on that. Okay, please vote.
I'm sorry, Mr. Evans, did you want to hear the public?
Okay, before we vote, we have some public speakers. I'm sorry. Thank you, Ms. Ward. We have one person already spoke to it, yes. Lance Ren and Jane Ball. Sorry about that. Before we vote, we will hear.
I just want to, my name is Lance Ren. I am the Operations Support Services, Chapter 724, president for CSEA, and I am in support of a SERP for our membership. We are, and I am, a graying workforce. Most of our members, because of the budget, we haven't done a lot of hiring, and we've got a graying workforce. A lot of our members would like to retire, but they don't because of medical benefits. A SERP, kind of mirrored what we did last time, something like that, would give the opportunity for our membership to retire and maybe pay for medical benefits because they don't have them after they retire. So to get them to 64, if they wanted to retire at age 60, 62, they would pay for that. And so I want to let you know that everywhere I go in the district, whoever I talk with, be it a landscaper, food services, custodial, bus drivers, maintenance, they all ask me. they all ask me, are we going to be doing an early retirement this year? Are we going to be doing an early retirement next year? I just want to let you know that Operations Support Services, CSEA, Chapter 724, is very much in support of a SERP for our membership. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Bausa.
Good afternoon. My name is Jane Bausa. I'm a para educator for San Diego Unified School District. I live at 5017 Peraldi Drive, San Diego, California. I would like to say thank you, Board of Trustee Viser, and thank you, Board of Trustee Foster, for bringing this up. We've been waiting for this to come up again and to be investigated because a lot of our members for para educator has been cut for so many hours, and they just can't retire. And like what President Ren says, that we can afford the medical without this SERP. This SERP will bring them to the process of retiring a little bit early and be able to give them enough option before they can get to their medical or Medicare. So I just want to tell you I support and I... My hats to both of you, and thank you for bringing this back.
Okay, thank you. If there are no further comments, please vote on this item. Okay, that passes 4-0 to direct the staff to investigate that. Okay, item H5 is directing staff to draft a district policy to ban the use of coal tar sealant. Mr. Viser?
Thank you, President Evans. This policy is very important to several members of our community, especially to the safety of our kids. There's a lot of research that has documented the fact that coal tar is a known carcinogen. It's very toxic. It's already been banned in a few states and several municipalities and other school districts. This policy will codify in San Diego Unified School District that we will not use in now or any time in the future coal tar-based sealants. There are non-toxic sealants that are available in the market. A lot of retailers do not even offer it on their shelves anymore, such as Home Depot and Lowe's. They've pulled coal tar-based sealants off of their shelves, and instead, consumers are able to buy the noncarcinogenic alternatives. So I would urge my fellow board members to codify this ban into school district policy for a variety of reasons, but really, the most important reason is because for the safety of our kids.
Okay, that is your motion. Is there a second?
Yeah. And just to clarify, the motion is to direct the superintendent to draft a policy, to draft a ban on policy tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Asking the superintendent about...
Right.
To ban it.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a very collegial board. We always have to have someone be a thorn in the side, so I'll do that tonight. I certainly don't want us to use coal tar sealant. However, when I spoke with district staff, it is not being used, nor are there any plans to use it. So my position is basically I'm going to abstain on this vote. I understand abstain is a no vote, but basically because I don't want us to pass a lot of policies about things that we're not... That are not... We're not currently doing, or banning something that we're not doing. So... And there are no more comments? Please vote on this item? Or not? Okay. And that passes 3-0 with one abstention. Okay, moving on to... We just already did the other one. So we'll go to the MOU with the Red Cross. And I don't know if you want to tie H7 and H8 together? Or are these separate items? Mr. Viser?
There, we can lump them.
Okay.
Yes, I'll move H7, H8.
Okay. Memorandum of Understanding with the Red Cross and exploring options for AEDs. Do you have any comments on this, Superintendent?
The Memorandum of Understanding with the Red Cross, I understand you've already been on a tour of the Red Cross.
Trustee Barrera.
And with... I guess Dr. Evans hasn't been on his tour yet.
I thought I had an appointment today. It turned out it's a long day.
So the Red Cross has made some concerted efforts to make sure that we have a system-wide, city-wide approach to engage when there's an emergency in San Diego. And I think that for us to be able to be a good partner in the city, it's important that we look at this. So I was able to take a tour of the operations and to think about what they're able to do when there is a citywide emergency, and San Diego Unified School District as a good partner in that with our transportation and our food. And if we need to deploy masses of people and food in a massive catastrophe, this memorandum of understanding that we're going to be looking at revising will allow us to look at that partnership and be a strong partner. Tony Young has a great vision as the Director of the Red Cross. He's got a great vision for how the Red Cross can help coordinate and collaborate around the entire city. And I think it's important that we're good partners in that work. So I was glad that I got to have a tour with Superintendent Kova before he retired and look at incredibly sophisticated technology and what they have in place to be able to respond to emergencies in San Diego. So thanks for bringing this forward, and we'll look to make an appropriate memorandum of understanding on this item.
Right. Thank you, Superintendent.
Okay, so we're voting on the MOU with the Red Cross and the directing staff to explore options for placing AEDs in every school, of which there are some now, but not every school. Okay, please vote. Okay, and that passes 4-0. Item H9 is the public hearing on additional proposals from CSEA, OSS, Articles 14, 16, and 21. This is a standard public hearing when there are proposals brought forward in the collective bargaining process. Ms. Ward, we have no public speakers on this, so that will close the public hearing. That's just for information at this point. And now we go to item I1, which is the declaration of need for fully qualified educators. Okay, this is a standard operating procedure where we have to do this each year. Please vote. And now we will go to the items on the consent agenda, which were pulled. And let's start with item E3. And item E3 is about the ICC. Ms. Foster, did you have comments on this one?
Yes, I do. I just wanted to... No, I don't. I wanted to know, do we have equity of A through G courses, course offerings at all of our high schools or plan to do so? Could you kind of speak to what the committee's response or work on that?
I didn't even need to call up Dr. Salazar. I was going to ask staff to come up and respond to that. Thank you for being prepared. Yes.
He's always prepared.
You're asking an important question, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this question publicly. Thank you.
Currently, we have a resource counselor that formerly is now working for the Office of Quality Neighborhood Schools, who's ensuring equity in all of our master schedules. She currently has been working diligently, one-on-one, with all of our high school, all of our secondary principals, including middle school principals, to ensure that A through G implementation is occurring and being planned for with fidelity. We are also brainstorming with her and the academic leadership team to ensure that area superintendents are informed and that there will be close monitoring of the master schedules for the coming year and subsequent years to ensure that there is a safety net for all students to complete that coursework.
Rigor with support.
Right, and then along those lines, I would ask... Well, let me ask this. Do we have a policy where... Or a practice where the master schedules are posted online? And if we don't, I'm asking that we do that, you know, for the sake of transparency and all that?
Master schedules are posted, and teachers do have their assignments prior to leaving for the summer. Whether they're posted online, I would have to check into that.
Okay, all right.
So based on that question, what we can count on is beginning in September 2013 that all of the middle schools and high schools in San Diego Unified, all the secondary schools, will have full A to G access?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so that's... I mean, I realize they're planning and checking it right now, but we can count on in September that that will be the case.
Correct. And keep in mind that there are different courses that students take within the different grade levels. So there will be different focus areas within the different grade levels as opposed to differences between middle school course offerings and high school course offerings.
Right. And I understand too that there's obviously going to be a difference based on the size of the school in terms of the variety of courses that are offered, but in terms of being able to... The primary goal is first of all to be able to meet A to G requirements by attending any school in San Diego.
Correct.
Okay.
And then I would also ask that, and we'll discuss this further, but to bring that back, to have a larger discussion about what that looks like.
Okay, we'll plan on that in September, October. Okay?
Uh, yes.
Okay, move the item and seconded by Mr. Viser. Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Salazar. And now we go to item E21.
[inaudible].
Oh, excuse me, 1920, 19. Questions on 19 and 20?
19 and 20.
Well, she had questions on 19 and 20, so we didn't vote on them.
The main question is, for the I21, why are they separate items? Why didn't we do those separately? That's just my simple question.
Okay. There we go.
Lee Dolgeroff is going to answer that question.
Okay.
What we decided to do with this is to provide more opportunity to smaller businesses. We broke the work up into four different zones throughout the district. We've done this over the past four years, and so that was the idea behind. We didn't think also having several contractors gives us some redundancy. So in case we're having poor performance by one, we can shift the work to another. But that's the reason for this, for having four zones. Three of the zones are on the agenda tonight. The fourth zone will come at the next board meeting. We had an issue with a bid. The low bidder ended up dropping out, so we'll be bringing that one to you.
Thank you very much. I'm very happy to hear that because at my glance, for some reason, I see Saturn Electric and Southland Electric, and I thought it was the same company. And so I was wondering, why would we separate that out? But I'm glad to hear that we're providing more opportunities. So good. That's what I want to hear.
Okay. You want to move those items?
Yes, please.
Okay, seconded. Please vote for 19 and 20. And then we'll move on to item E21.
So for this item, I just wanted to give staff an opportunity to speak to why the reclassification.
Absolutely. The child development position was reviewed and analyzed with the vacancy that arose. And when it was reviewed, it was found that the description did not reflect the operational and educational complexities of this particular role. And we found that over the years, it's a highly complex organization, and it currently is typically staffed, and it has to be staffed with a certificated manager. So that being said, they supervise 65 campuses, 500 staff members, and a $25 million budget. So when that was presented to the review team for the development of the position, which did need to be changed because it had different reports and different things and a different era, it did come out with this new reclassification.
So thank you for that. And so part of that reclassification or process, I don't know all the details too, do you look at similar positions with similar responsibilities, similar budgets to create parity?
Absolutely. One of the first things we looked at was the high school principal role. And so this is equivalent, as far as salary scale, to that of a high school principal role, of a comprehensive campus. But it also had similar characteristics to a former position that we had, which was an executive director of federal programs. So it has a wide scope of accountability. And so it came kind of in between those two. But it was rated right there with the equivalent to a high school principal in complexity.
Thank you.
I'll speak to this as well. Thank you for the specific details. And when we look at our early childhood program and the quality neighborhood school, beginning with pre-kindergarten, and making sure that we have excellent preschool classrooms all over this district. As a former principal at Central Elementary, we had a very large preschool program. Running those programs from a systemic, systematic... You know, systemic and systematic way is really important. And when we looked at... Lots of funding has actually been lost over the years to provide a high-quality preschool. So we've had to partner with lots of agencies to offer the quality preschool. And there's lots... So there's federal guidelines that go with that. And so the oversight that's necessary to be able to manage those partners and implement this program in a very coherent way, it's become somewhat fragmented because we've lost money and we've tried to keep it together. And so we looked at this particular position with the retirement of the current director and the new director posting this position to be able to make sure the person... We're seeking somebody that's going to be able to make this very high-quality approach and use the dollars wisely, the programs, the federal programs that are coming in to support this.
And do you move that item?
Move.
Okay, that passes 4-0. At this point, we are amazingly, due to having a new superintendent... No.
The shortest school board meeting I've ever attended.
A very short school board meeting.
I'm efficient.
Okay. And I just wanted to say that this meeting may seem like, you know, it's just a few routine items and it's kind of a quiet start. But I just want you to mark down in your little books that in July 2013, that this meeting took place with the first meeting with Cindy Martin as the superintendent. And we have done a lot over the last few years to really stabilize our schools to survive this very difficult time and make incremental gains. We do not intend to make incremental gains in the next few years. We intend to make huge gains. And in a few years, people throughout the country will be commenting on the fact that the San Diego Unified has achieved equity in education for all students, that we do in fact have a quality school in every neighborhood. And I would welcome all reporters to fact-check that, to come back to me in a few years and quote me on saying that because I'm very confident that we're going to accomplish a lot in the next few years with this board and with Superintendent Martin. So thank you very much for attending the meeting, and this adjourns our meeting.[1758.36][1758.36][applause]
Great job.